All right. Good evening, everyone. I call the July 1, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Sub super gavel. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is a study session for the Commission on Draft Elements of the Canyon Park Area Subarea Plan Update and the Limited Parking Reductions and Height Allowances Code Amendments. And before I move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was again extended till midnight today, July 1. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. Imagine Boffel Notice, City Website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 PM today. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available later for viewing on the city's YouTube channel. The call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advance notice are able to make comments under the Audience Comment portion of the meeting. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged, and we do have a few. At this point, I want to recognize that all of the commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Curd, who indicated he might be a little bit late, and we will recognize when he does arrive. We also have Community Development Director Mike Cotterman present, Senior Planner Bruce Blackburn, and Senior Planner Dave Boyd. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. Speaking, very important. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation and after each policy question, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up the yellow speaker cards in the portion of your screen. I will call on you as I see them, and Director Cotterman will also help me keep track of that. This will help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, or second a motion, or participate in a debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. After a review of the agenda, and if there are no objections, I do propose to switch the order of the two discussion items, addressing the limited parking reductions and height allowances first, and then moving on to the height allowances. I assume there are no concerns there. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. And in keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and part of the record. I believe Director Cotterman will have a few words to say about that?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to highlight for the record and for the commission that you did receive five pieces of, five documents of comments that were sent to you. Some were today, one was, I believe, last week or early this week. The first one is from Anne Agard, and it's regarding the Canyon Park Subarea Plan, some comments about sections regarding wetland buffers and the policies related to that. Second is from Van S Feldman dated June 25th, directed to Bruce Blackburn and Eddie Lowe from the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association regarding the Wash Dot Express Tole Lane project in Canyon Park and the traffic impacts related to that. Related to that was another memo from 10W, the consultants, transportation consultants for the Business Park Owners Association. That was dated June 22nd, again related to what was in the comment letter from the Business Park Owners Association related to the Express Tole Lane project. Also today, you were forwarded two letters from Roger Blandage, one dated July 1st. Excuse me. This is reiterating some comments that he had made at a Planning Commission meeting, I believe, back on March 4th, that has to do with some property that he owns in the study area and the zoning that he is requesting for that. And actually, the other letter, I think, also relates to that as well, and that one's dated February 28th. So those are, were sent to you today. If you did not receive those, please let me know. We'll make sure that you get those, and those will become part of the record. Even though they received them today, and the public hearing is not till next week, we'll make sure that they get included in the record for the public hearing as well. So if you have any questions about those, let me know. And if, like I said, if you did not receive any of those, please let me know. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize that Commissioner Curd joined the meeting at 6:06. So all commissioners are present at this time. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 3 meeting. Are there any, not June 3rd, when was the last meeting? June 17th, if I could open the packet, I guess. I updated almost all my notes, but that one. So I'd like to, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 17 meeting. Are there any corrections or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none and seeing no indications of interest in commenting, would a commissioner like to make a motion to adopt the minutes? I see Commissioner Curd making a motion to adopt the minutes. Is there a second? I saw Commissioner Alderks first, so we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the June 17 meeting, aided by Commissioner Curd, second by Commissioner Alderks. All in favor, please raise your speaker card. I see all in favor, so the motion is passed. Moving on to the regular agenda, is there any new business for the meeting tonight? There is no business. We do not have a public hearing tonight, nor a public meeting. So we will move on to the study session, starting first with the limited parking reductions and height allowances code amendments. And I believe Senior Planner Boyd will lead us through that discussion.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, commissioners. I just have a short presentation. We're going to try to get through this in about 30 minutes to, if not a little less, to, just to introduce this item, we will come back on the 15th for a public hearing, and I'm hoping recommendation at that time. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and open up my PowerPoint. Come on. Not letting me. Bear with me for a second. It worked fine in our trial run here, but there we go. Too many things in the way on the screen here.
You're close.
Okay. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes, it's on my screen.
Okay, okay. So this has the rather clunky name of limited parking reduction and height code amendments. These are amendments that that will provide some flexibility in applying some state mandated parking limits and also give us another tool to encourage affordable housing. So the parking reductions are based on recent state law that limits parking minimums for certain residential uses within a quarter mile of frequent transit stops. Also, the Bothell Housing Strategy identifies parking reductions as a tool that we can use to help create more affordable housing. The height allowances, the downtown plan, planned action EIS, height analysis, studied heights in the SR 522 corridor, the general downtown corridor, downtown transition district of the originally proposed four stories and 54 feet. Those were ultimately reduced to three floors and 35 feet, or four floors and 45 feet, depending on the situation. But the fact that the environmental impacts, the aesthetic impacts of the taller heights were studied in the EIS creates an opportunity for us to allow that additional height without further environmental study. We just need to adopt the original downtown planned action EIS. So, and the Bothell Housing Strategy does also recognize height bonuses as one tool that can be used to incentivize affordable housing. So we're looking at these two together because they relate to code amendments that were initiated by council in the 2020 docket, in part to facilitate the development of Block A, one of the city's surplus properties. You may know it better as the Bothell Ski and Bike Site and adjacent property. This parcel is currently under contract to Imagine Housing, an affordable housing developer, and they are proposing to build a project, and they would like to do a 76 units of low and very low income senior housing units with 36 parking spaces. And their similar projects that they've done of this sort have a very similar parking ratio that works for them and for their tenants. The state law in 2019, House Bill 1923 was passed, and then it was modified this year in House Bill 2343. And they say that jurisdictions cannot require, have minimum parking requirements within a quarter mile of free frequent transit for three cases, and each of these cases has a different, now has a different definition for transit frequency. For low and very low income housing, there's a limit of three quarters of a space per unit or one space per bedroom for units that are within a quarter mile of a transit stop that has at least four stops per hour for 12 hours a day, 12 continuous hours in a day. For senior and disabled housing, there is no, for projects that are within a quarter mile of a transit stop that has at least two stops per hour, there's no requirement for the actual residential units. Jurisdictions can establish a parking requirement for guests and for staff of the project. And in cases where there is not available street parking immediately adjacent to the project, there can be a requirement for residential parking as well. So those limits aren't established, so that's really up to the jurisdictions to determine how to set those rates. This year, they added for parking market rate housing, the same three-quarter space per unit and one space or one space per bedroom for market rate housing within a quarter mile of a transit stop that has stops for, stops per hour for 12 hours per day for a individual transit line. So in Bothell, that will be a bus line, and the map on the screen here, I'm not sure how legible it is on your screens, but the orange dots on the map are the transit stops that have at least four stops per hour for 12 hours a day. There'll be a slightly different map for the other two situations. And then the pink bubbles around those orange dots are the quarter mile circles. So some considerations for you all to think about and our proposed approach. Since transit service changes over time, we're anticipating a bus rapid transit service that's going to bring more and more frequent bus service to both downtown and Canyon Park and the North Creek area to some extent. But that's going to happen in 2024. Even though it'll be more frequent service, the stops for that frequent service will be spaced a little bit further apart than the current local and express routes that we have. So it's very difficult to establish actual zones where this should apply. So we're trying to come up with a flexible approach. The applicability also depends on site-specific conditions, like I mentioned, like the availability of on-street parking. So that's another factor that's really hard to apply to a set zone. So therefore, our approach, our proposed approach to meet these state requirements is to provide some exceptions and allow an applicant to request to utilize those exceptions when they can demonstrate that they meet the criteria through a parking study and a description of their project and their context. The Bothell Code currently does have some exceptions for transit service reductions in parking based on transit service, but they're a much tighter radius and a much lower level of service. It really just applies to service in the peak hours in the morning and the evening. So our approach is to leave those as they are. They still would apply to some projects citywide, but to layer these new exceptions based on the state code on top of that. So some questions that we'd like you to consider and give some feedback tonight, if you're able to, or that we'll get into more deeply at the public hearing in two weeks, is this whole idea of layering the new parking exceptions onto existing ones so that they will apply citywide as transit service evolves. One question regarding senior housing, senior and disabled housing, is that we could establish a minimum parking rate based on expected staffing and guest levels that would provide a baseline. And as far as guest levels, typically throughout the city, our parking requirements require 0.2 spaces per unit for guest parking, so that might be a starting point. And then adding on to that a factor for staffing levels as well. And then allowing applicants to apply for reductions down to that base level based on their proximity to transit and the availability of street parking. And then the state law doesn't specify whether the quarter mile buffer, the just a quarter mile circle, or whether it should be based on walking distance. And we would recommend that it be based on actual walking distance. Some of these quarter mile circles are really not accessible. Some of the stops along 522 don't provide good accessibility in all directions, so we would base the requirement on walking distance. So we can come back to these questions. I just have a couple more, a few more slides here. I wanted to get into the height allowance. For the purposes of allowing the proposed development on Lot A, they've also requested that we look at a height allowance, an incentive for them, that would allow them to add an extra floor within the height limit that was studied in the downtown planned action environmental impact statement. So that, that analysis looked at four floors and 54 feet. So, and they have indicated and demonstrated that they're able to do five floors of residential construction within that 54-foot limit. So that's what we're looking at as a, as a bonus for affordable housing. The, this additional height that we have in the environmental study provides an opportunity for us to apply a voluntary affordable housing incentive to get more units and to address, to serve lower income levels than we're able to do in our required affordable housing overlays. Our proposal is to apply this just to the SR 522 district areas that don't already have the affordable housing overlay as a first step. We're under a bit of a tight timeline. Imagine Housing needs these code amendments in place in order to get some grant funding that they're applying for in September. So that's our overall goal here, is to get these amendments in place so that they will be able to take advantage of them and provide this needed affordable housing that will improve the equity and housing availability in downtown Bothell. So the questions that we're posing for the Planning Commission with regard to the height allowance is whether there's a preference for a greater percentage of affordable units, and that would be a potential trade-off for there being fewer potential projects. The Imagine Bothell project is a project being proposed by an affordable housing developer that relies on various funding sources to be able to do their projects. And because of that, and because of the funding sources, all of their units will be, will meet affordability levels. The exact mix is going to depend on exactly what funding sources they are successful in obtaining, but it will be, on average, at units that are affordable to households earning 50% of the area median income or less on average. And then that's just based on the criteria that are in the various state funding sources for these kinds of projects. And similarly, we'd like to know if the commission would prefer to go for a deeper affordability level within the limits of Imagine Housing's potential unit mix. So as I said, the state, the grant levels are, would all put them within, in that 50% and lower as an average. They, they're actually proposing to do a mix of units at 30% AMI, some at 50 and some at 60. But the, the very, the level that we set could be at 50%, it could be at 60%, or it really could be at whatever level we choose. Because the affordability level that we're able to achieve by applying affordable housing requirements in the overlay districts is somewhat higher, we've set that at 60% AMA for rental housing and 80% for ownership housing. This is an opportunity to get at those deeper affordability levels that really are very difficult to do in any sort of market-driven mechanism like inclusionary zoning or affordable housing requirements. So those are the two questions that, on this issue, that we'd like you to consider. So with that, I'll open it up for questions, and as I said, the next steps will be the public hearing scheduled for July 15th, potentially continued to August 5th. We're hoping to be able to wrap it up on July 15th. And then whether we finish on the July 15th or August 5th, we are planning to take this to council with your recommendation for a hearing and adoption on September 1st. So with that, I'll open it up for questions, and I'll be able to go back and the slides with the questions on them, too.
Okay. Okay. So Commissioner P. Strip, do you have a question? No, not David. Oh, Lee, sorry, I can't see all the, it's up in the corner, so I can't see everyone. So Commissioner Lee has a question.
That's okay. Are you real okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dave, for that presentation. Did you mention that, was it correct that you said this is for affordable senior housing there on Lot A?
Imagine Housing is proposing affordable senior housing on Lot A. The amendments that we're talking about, well, the state requires different parking requirements for affordable housing as one category, for senior and disabled housing as another category, and also for market rate housing, all within the quarter mile of frequent transit stops, and all having slightly different definitions of frequency.
Okay, thank you.
But the proposal before us is for low-income senior housing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So there were a number of issues around parking and two around heights, so let's talk about parking first. Any commissioners have questions about, or would like to further discuss the questions about limited parking reductions? Commissioner Curd?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Dave, for the presentation. I'd like to delve into parking pretty deeply, and I don't know if this, these limited amendments are, were to do that, but the number one But the number one kind of system wide barrier to affordable housing. For not only senior housing but workforce housing in Bothell is parking. It's very restrictive. We've increased the code for parking minimums in the recent history. And so we're running sort of an experiment with it. And I don't think that it's working. We're getting a lot of townhomes. And that just by requiring all this parking. It's making it infeasible for affordable housing to really pencil out for developers. That's something that we've heard in this city, but also in the North Shore region in general. So I'd like to just sort of. Let it be made known that my opinion is that we should paint with really broad brushstrokes here. It it kind of behooves us as a city to make sure that we're really flexible with parking minimums. And so if we could extend these to, you know, more than just. These specific cases in the state guidelines. It might make it easier to when we get applications. It might make it easier to, you know, for the community to development to determine whether something meets. Needs requirements rather than being really specific and having it be really difficult for people to understand whether their projects need it or not. One of my questions, Dave, is how much does a parking study generally cost someone during the development process? Do you have any information about that or just a ballpark? Does it depend on the project?
I think it would depend on the project to some extent. And I don't, off the top of my head, have have a good figure for you. But I can come back to you with with some estimates on the fifteenth.
That'd be great, yeah. I'm just kind of wondering because if someone is looking at doing a development, generally. They're looking at, you know, what's the upfront costs and parking is huge. And so they they obviously have kind of an impetus to figure out what are the parking requirements here? And can they be reduced if at all possible? Because a parking space isn't just, you know, square footage eaten out of the lot. But it's also maintenance over the course of the structure too. So I just I'm wondering what the costs would be to investigate that early on. Yeah, I'd like to hear from other commissioners too.
And if I if I could ask a ask a question of Commissioner Kurt. Just to, if I understand your question, are you presuming that the this would require a parking study in order to get the reduction in parking?
So I would say if it meets all these very specific requirements from the state guidance. It wouldn't, but I on one of the other slides, it had shown that. Parking reductions could be potentially looked at with a study. And so I wanted to delve into that too.
Okay.
Yes, I I did say that to take advantage of the. Provision in state law that allows senior housing to not have any requirement for the residences. But then allows jurisdiction to establish a requirement if there's not on street parking available. Well, we certainly have the option to just waive the requirement regardless of whether there's on street parking. But my thought was that to get to that that extreme parking reduction. They would have to at least do a parking study that looks at the availability of on street parking. And I I didn't ask for a price, but I did. We did ask Imagine Bothell about whether that they would be willing to do a parking study. And they said they they fully anticipated that they would be doing a parking study as part of their project. It's fairly other jurisdictions. Do have parking requirements that allow reductions with the the middle of a parking study. We don't currently, but this is one situation where we may.
That's sensible, thanks.
Dave, I would assume based on what I see of this site, there is no on street parking. Is that a fair conclusion?
Yes, that's that's would definitely be the case with this. I mean, in theory, depending on how how broad of a radius you look at from the project. I know in the city of Seattle, such parking studies look at an eight hundred foot radius. There may be some on street parking on the other side of five twenty two. But I don't think it's reasonable to assume that seniors are going to be parking. A couple of blocks away and across a pretty busy highway.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Alderks.
If I'm understanding the site correctly, the road access to that site wouldn't be off of five twenty two. They'd have to go. They have to go back around and behind, correct? Or would there be a driveway right off of five twenty two that they would access the housing development?
They are proposing actually two driveways of five twenty two. They're proposing to add a a fourth leg onto the one eight one eightieth street intersection with five twenty two. And then they're all planning a emergency access, emergency. Apparatus exit toward the south end of the site. So for emergency vehicles, it would be a drive through situation. For most people would enter and exit at the intersection. Are you able to see my arrow there on your screen? The. So they've they're working with with the city and with Washdott to. Get the all the necessary permissions to add a fourth leg. It would still be right in. And right out except for except the fourth leg would allow exiting traffic to. Ex go across onto one eightieth, there would be no left out. And there would be no left into the project from westbound five twenty two into the project. So those movements would would require people to go around the block and approach the project directly from one eightieth.
Okay, any other questions? I think we're, could you move back to the questions on parking, Dave? So again, there are the three questions here. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you and thanks for the presentation, Dave. I wanted to address the the first point, layer new parking exceptions onto existing ones. I think that's a really good idea. I feel like hopefully it's increasing, but whether increasing or decreasing, decreasing. We're going to see a lot of transit changes just with everything going on. And I think it makes sense to apply the changes citywide. I'm curious what everyone else thinks about that, but that's where I'm at with that. Thanks.
Commissioner Gustafson, you raised your card earlier and then Commissioner Alderks.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Yes, I do want to first of all echo Commissioner Kurt's comments about working with a broad brush. Thank you for the information provided. I think that looking at reduced parking minimum citywide is a great start. I do understand that perhaps if there's one place where that might not be the case. It would be senior housing because of accessibility issues. Specifically, I wanted to address the overlay question, the exception idea, which I agree with Commissioner Olson is a great idea. I am curious though about how much of a burden that shifts to developers. Do we make the exception known upfront? What exactly are the criteria that they have to meet? It seems to me that the only criteria they would have to meet is the distance criteria. So I'm want to know more about those criteria. And my other question would be, would this overlay exception concept meet state requirements?
I'm told by the Department of Commerce that 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 approach would would meet state standards. The. An applicant would have to demonstrate one that they that the type of housing that they're providing meets the requirements. Two, that they're within the they're within the quarter mile distance of frequent transit stop. And that and that there is, in fact, the the transit stop that does have the level of service to meet the state requirement. And then in the case of senior and disabled parking, they would need to. Either demonstrate that there is adequate on street parking or if not. Most likely that they need to provide some additional parking to compensate for that. And and what exactly those numbers are, we'll get into at the public hearing. Was there another question in there?
I think that answers it, thank you so much.
Commissioner Olson. Good. Okay, Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, all right, Jenny Alderks here. My question is about the exception. Would this be setting a precedent that would then make this? Like not only is there the current exception, but then we would then be creating a precedent for the rest of the city. That anytime a transit service changes and becomes, you know, applicable to the sitting, the setting. That this parking exception would then come into play? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's right, and and that's by design so that we don't have to change the code every time transit service is increased. So right now it would really apply mostly in the downtown sub area and portions of Canyon Park, Thrasher's Corner.
Yeah, and so thank you, thank you for that clarification. I I just want before I agree to something, you know, know that I understand it. And and I do, I do think that it's it's expedient to to make this a citywide. You know, kind of precedent so that we we can be more expeditious in the future when things come up for this. So I you have my support in this proposal.
Okay, other commissioner questions?
And I did remember Sarah's other question. She asked if if developers would know upfront about these requirements. So they they would know to the extent that these requirements would be written into our code. So they they would be there for any developer to see. And then, of course, typically, we planning staff is approached. Even ahead of a pre-application supplemental. And they would they would hear about it then. And if not, then they would hear about it at the preapplication conference. So it would be very transparent and and and. And most developers of this kind of housing are are going to be looking for those kinds of exceptions in any case.
Okay. Commissioner Olson.
I did have one kind of question. So we're just talking about basically they have the option to reduce the amount of parking. They don't have to, right? Because I think we're thinking. It sounds like there's some concern that they just won't have parking, but it's just a reduction in the amount of required parking. But they could still add more than that if they decide that's what they need, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bleak. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, good.
Okay, I do apologize, I'm having tech home difficulty tonight. I I appreciate the other commissioners. I guess we're not doing much deliberations here, I guess, but I would I would caution, I guess, the the planning commission with. Painting too broad a brush on this parking issue. I think it's actually a really, it's a significant thing that needs quite a bit of work done. Before I think the commissions look into doing a citywide. And with regards to that last comment about they can put in additional parking. I I just get the feeling that developers will rarely put in more parking than they have to. I think it just seems to me that they it's cost prohibitive, so they don't put in. But I know they can put in more, but do you have a take on that, Dave? How often developers put in, I guess, more than they're required to?
I would say residential developers, it's rare that they that they go beyond or much beyond. Typically, they'll they'll put as much as they can do feasibly to meet the requirement. And if if one level of of parking. Satisfies the requirement and includes a few extra spaces, they will they will do those. But the the only developers that I've experienced in recent years that are interested in providing more than. The minimum required by a city are commercial developers, particularly. People doing shopping center type development. They usually like to do. Four spaces per thousand feet, square feet of of floor area, which is above what what we actually require.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to clarify that while we're proposing that this these exceptions apply citywide. In reality, they only apply to the parts of the city that have that level of frequent transit service, so.
Thanks, yeah, and I also want to outline that this is only allowed in the areas where there's even like multifamily residential capacity, which is very minimal in our city too. And very, you know, segregated, there's only certain parts of our city that that's even allowed. So this is, we might be saying painted as a broad brush stroke, but I think just to clarify my earlier comments. This this is pretty targeted and by allowing it to be flexible. We're allowing it to allowing the city to be able to change and not have to go back and and make edits and changes and amendments every single time. There's a rezone or another street extension or whatever. I'd also just like to to say that parking reductions is. It's a it's a climate climate crisis thing too. And so by having such high parking requirements in the city, we're contributing grossly to. You know, the system wide climate crisis. And it's part of council's goals to make sure that we can reduce our impacts and be more resilient as a city against climate change. Well, one way that we can do that is reducing these parking minimums that are already pretty high. In comparison to some of the cities and jurisdictions around us and that have been raised fairly recently too. So I just want to say that this is a fairly narrow scope where it intersects with. Kind of affordable housing and frequent transit. But I mean, in a broader sense, this is a way that we can fight climate change here at home too. So, thanks.
So to ground ourselves here, this session, you're just trying to get a sense for whether you need additional information. Before we vote at the next time this is up, correct?
Yeah, that's I I want to get a good sense for planning commission concerns. There are two other questions here that really haven't been addressed. One is whether we for the senior housing, senior and disabled housing to whether we should go ahead and establish a minimum. Based on expected staffing and guest levels. based on expected staffing and guest levels, and what, whether there are any feelings about having the quarter-mile buffer be based on walking distance as opposed to just a quarter-mile circle.
Okay, so to hopefully keep us moving along so we can get through the agenda, does anyone feel they need any additional information now? Or to need Dave to get them any additional information now so that we can adjust and discuss this at the next meeting? Commissioner Alderks?
Thank you, Chair. My question is, how often is there a disparity between what the developer wants to provide, especially for a senior housing development, and what the staff and residents and visitors wish, like, need for them to be comfortable?
I think it's quite common. The most recent senior housing project that was done in Bothell is the SHAG project. When they first applied, they were proposing to do mostly affordable senior housing. And at the, you know, at the time, and 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 even now, we do have, for specialized senior housing projects that meet certain requirements, we do allow the parking requirement of as three-quarter or two-thirds of a space per unit. They said that based on their past experience, they really only needed about half a space per unit. But then, over time, their project evolved and and they had more market rate units than they were originally proposing. And and there, there's some concern that that there may not, that the amount of parking they're required may not be enough. I, we haven't actually seen any any detailed study that that demonstrates that. So, and of course, anecdotally, we frequently get concerns about spillover parking from projects. And so, we see both sides of the issue there.
If I could just piggyback on what Dave was talking about, there's another aspect to this that's important to keep in mind. And it's not something that we're addressing in this code, nor can we. And that has to do with the price of parking for the tenant. Most new development now separates or uncouples the parking from the rent. Older buildings, typically in the past, when you paid your rent, that included all of your utilities and parking and all those sorts of things. Most of those things are now are are decoupled so that you have the option of not paying for parking. And there's a, there's an upside to that. If people don't have a car, then they don't need to pay for the parking. The downside is that there are people who choose not to pay for the parking, but they do have a car. And then, we see some of that spillover parking that Dave was talking about. So, that becomes a factor in this as well. But again, it's not something that that we're proposing, nor can we address in this particular amendment.
Okay, thank you. So, any other questions or comments on this first question, or can we move to the second question? Seeing none. So, second question, Dave?
Are you referring to the second question on this slide or the second second questions?
Second question on this side. Let's see if we can get some buy-off on all three questions and then move, hopefully quickly. I think these two will be quicker.
Yeah, so whether the people are comfortable with establishing a minimum based on staffing and guest levels, and if if so, we'll we'll come back to you with that. That's our inclination to to do that, since the state law does allow it.
Mr. Olson?
I, I guess I'm, maybe I'm not getting something, but yes, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure what the, what the pros would be of not doing that.
Well, state law doesn't require us to do that. They just allow jurisdictions to establish a minimum.
Okay, if it, I think it makes sense, you know, if you think it makes sense. It's, I guess I'm curious if anybody's would would be against that and why.
So, to clarify, does that mean there would be, in addition to whatever parking there is for the residents, there would be some minimum amount of parking based on staffing? This is an add-on?
Well, essentially, what, whatever the the base parking requirement would be the, the would be the starting point. So, in 522 corridor, that's one space per bedroom. And that already meets the requirement, the state, at least one of the options in state law for affordable housing. It doesn't meet the state law provision that that we cannot set a minimum parking requirement for the residents themselves, except in the situation where there's not a street parking available. So, basically, that would be up to the applicant to say, well, I'm doing a senior project. I, we, I don't think, we don't think we need one space per bedroom. Here's our parking study. Here is, here's what we think our required guest and and staff parking is. And and they need to demonstrate that that their proposal will meets the the criteria in the state, state legislation, so.
So, commissioners, questions? I will say, Commissioner Alderks?
Dave, if that was you, go ahead and go first.
Oh, I just wanted to say, so what I'm talking, the question here has to do with, do we allow them to reduce their parking down to a minimal level based on what we think is a reasonable amount for for staff and guests? Or do we just, would we allow them to reduce it to zero if they can demonstrate that all their staff and guests are going to arrive by bus, for example?
Commissioner Alderks?
Thank you, Chair. My question for you, Dave, is how would, how would a developer be able to demonstrate that all of their, all of their staff and guests are going to arrive by bus?
Good question. I think that would be difficult.
Yeah. And with that in mind, I also want to remember how historically underpaid senior housing staff is. And the the burden it is on them to not have adequate parking in the place of their work so that they then have to, if they have to, you know, pay for public parking in some case. And and I don't know if that, like, I'm not actually familiar with many paid public parking spaces in Bothell, so I don't know if that would actually enter into the, into the equation because they might end up parking at City Hall. Like, is that, is that something that the city wants to take on? When you're talking about spillover, there's not much street parking in the area. So, the closest kind of public parking that wouldn't be for a business would be City Hall. Is that correct?
That's the closest structured parking. I think there, there probably is some street parking available that's, that's closer than that. But but it's, and that's where this sort of site-by-site analysis that we're asking the applicant to do comes into play, that what makes sense for for this site may not make sense for a site that's across the street from City Hall, for example.
The other commissioners? Commissioner Curd first, and then Commissioner Gustafson.
Thanks. I might have a divergent opinion here, but I think that the parking study, in addition with the, the institutional knowledge that a developer like Imagine Housing would bring to a senior affordable housing center where these reductions would even apply, they know how much parking their staffing and guest levels would need. It was, they had already proposed it, and they they know they're in the the business of making these work effectively for their tenants. And so, I, I think that the parking study could be kind of a a check and balance on the developer instead of having a minimum citywide where we might not be thinking about certain situations or certain cases. So, I would lean more towards the no on this question.
Please, Mr. Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson here. Thank you, Chair. I am inclined to say that the minimum for staff and guests should be zero. In other words, there should be no minimum if the developer can demonstrate that people will arrive via bus. And my question is, is it an all-or-nothing question? Is it 0.2 spaces per staff, guests, or zero? And a person or developer can demonstrate that, hey, we're aspiring to get people to come via bus, and 75% of our guests will arrive via bus or carpool. Can you then do 75% of 0.2 and have a more phased approach? Maybe complicated, but might also provide an incentive.
Yeah. The the idea of a minimum would be a floor. They couldn't go below that. They, through their study and their their analysis of of similar projects, they could get the reduction down to that, that floor. But the floor would basically be saying, no, we're not going to allow projects to not have any parking that they at least need to address some, some level of parking for staff and guests. And the the proposal here, as I said, is is for 30, they're proposing to do 36 parking spaces. So, I think they feel that they need some parking onsite. And we haven't had any proposals for absolute zero parking in Bothell today.
Okay, Commissioner Bleed, and then back to Commissioner Gustafson. Can't hear you.
My apologies. I muted your, I muted your phone, Commissioner Bleed. I I unmuted it now. You can, you can speak.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that, everyone. I'm inclined at this point in time to continue to give the city the ability to establish a minimum. And of course, because that minimum can be very minimum. But I think it's a good idea to have some kind of baseline there. And instead of just trusting a parking study to be able to meet future requirements for parking.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I do believe I might have misunderstood the question. I, I can't figure out whether reducing the staff and guests to zero is even an option, if the study is required. I thought it was, but based on Dave Boyd's response, maybe I've not understood the question properly.
The state law would allow us to have no parking requirement at all. But it, but it does provide, it does also give us the ability to establish a parking requirement for staff and guests. So, that's really the question. Should we take advantage of that provision in the state law? And and at least apply a a baseline?
So, I'd make one comment as someone with a family member in senior housing in Bothell, that yes, parking is pretty useful, particularly as the seniors have limited mobility. And even a few steps from the curb can be a challenge sometimes. And being able to drive up and get this person into the car to a doctor's appointment is useful from personal experience, which isn't the best thing for public policy, I recognize. But I'd like that to be recognized. So, anything else before we go to the final question on parking? Commissioner Alderks?
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. I I want to echo that as well. Also, from the perspective of a senior not living at the senior housing, going to visit friends, and the difficulty that can present to even getting in the building if there are parking difficulties, and how how, you know, at a certain point, and and like, I do not want to see my loved ones choose between, you know, physically harming themselves or overdoing it when they want to visit a friend, kind of thing. So, I I empathize with you, Chair Keenan, on that, having a familiar experience with that as well. And so, I guess my question is to Dave Boyd. And like, I like it when you offer different options. So, I'm hearing that there's different percentages of parking spaces that are considered a minimum. And I've heard two-thirds, I've heard a couple of others. If I'm understanding correctly, Imagine Housing is proposing about a half a space per resident or whatever unit of measurement you're using. What are some typical, you know, portions or or percentages that are used that we might be able to choose from or discuss?
So, the, the ones that, the one that's in effect in for senior housing in in Bothell is the two-thirds of a space per unit. But we've heard from more than one senior housing developer that that's more than they really need. So, and and the state code really requires us to allow senior housing within near frequent transit to go below that level. So, I I've heard a half a space per unit, four-tenths of a space per unit are are different levels that that I've heard about. I'm not sure that those are actually on the books in any jurisdictions. I can come back to you with more information about what other jurisdictions have established as minimums. In a situation where there is on-street parking and and that the the state law basically says that we can't require any spaces for the residents. We can really only base a parking requirement on staff and guests.
Okay, given this is going to be our, given this was going to be our quick item, and we still have a couple more questions here, I'd like to move off of this question and hopefully be fairly quick on the next one regarding whether we should base the quarter-mile buffer on walking distance. And yeah, can we have a show of hands whether people are comfortable with that? Hands raised being yes, you are comfortable? Ooh, I guess, that's three, four. Commissioner is not comfortable with that requirement? One. Some discussion there. Commissioner Curd, I assume you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. I think that these, these exceptions should be as broad as possible. And so, especially in the downtown area, the radius, radii of a quarter of a mile is going to be about the same as walking distance. Maybe not in Canyon Park, but I think that if we start basing it off of walking distance, then what about desire pathways? What about in-street pedestrian connections? Or I know it's probably not as feasible for bike connections in senior housing, but if this ever gets reapplied to workforce housing, what about then? There's just so many other cases that could go on that I think just making it as broad as possible is the best situation. So, that's my two cents.
Okay, Mr. Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson here. Thanks, Chair.
Sarah Gustafson here. Thanks Chair and thanks Commissioner Kurt for mentioning something that I hadn't even thought of. To me, the quarter-mile seemed, or the walking distance seemed the broadest. Perhaps we could set a language that would say a quarter-mile walking distance or a quarter-mile physical distance, whichever is greater.
Okay. Dave, you okay with thinking about that?
Yeah. Oh, that's good, good input.
Okay, let's see if we can move quickly through the height questions. You had two questions there.
Hmm. If I can get my slides to advance. Oops, too far. Yeah. Maybe we can wrap this into one and just whether there's a preference for a greater number of affordable units? Or if there's a higher priority for getting deeper affordability or?
And deeper affordability meaning lower cost units?
Units that are affordable to people at a lower income level.
Okay. Commissioner Vleat, please. Get the oops, hang, hang on. Got to get Dave on.
Go ahead, David.
My preference, my preference would be for deeper affordability. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional, recognizing we're not voting on this at this meeting. We're just giving staff direction whether to bring us additional information when the vote does come. Commissioner Gustafson?
Thank you Commissioner Kirin and thank you Dave for making this choice very clear to us, at least what the trade-offs are. I think this is almost an impossible decision. Do you want more affordable units or do you want deep, more deeply affordable units? And I almost feel that this is the kind of question that we as commissioners cannot answer because we are not trying to rent out those units at the moment. I feel like we would need to have some community input or some idea from people who might be trying to rent these units. What would be more appropriate for them? And I don't know how to do that.
Dave, when we have the hearing, will the developer be present to be able to give us a little feedback on their feeling on this question?
I hope so. They'll certainly be invited. In fact, I, I did provide them the packet for tonight's study session. So I hope so. And, and, and also we can, we can have the staff from Arch available that may be better prepared to answer some of these affordability questions.
I think that would be very helpful. So anything else on this one or we'll let Dave go and move on to Canyon Park? Commissioner Alderks?
Jenny Alderks here. I want to echo what Sarah has said and, and encourage Dave that we, that what I too would like to see community feedback. And the, what, you know, what are lower-income members of our community needing in housing? And, and what kind of, like, you know, from my, my very limited contact with, you know, certain individuals, like, so I have anecdotal information. I, I prefer to see deeper affordability for those low-income members of our community that I know. We're talking about people who are trying to exit homelessness, who are recovering from disability that are, you know, trying to kind of squeeze their way back into, into housing. And so the deeper we go, the more we can serve the people who need it most. But we can talk about what people need and we can speculate, or we can go to community organizations and get community feedback. And that's the information I would like to request.
If I could just quickly respond to that. This is Mike Cotterman. I think those are all great questions and we do have information in our housing strategy about what the community's needs are. We, we did a housing analysis a couple of years ago. Arch did that study along with Dave Boyd. And typically, we're like most cities in that we are, we have the greatest need in the affordable housing at the 30% of area median income and below. Because that's not provided by the market and there really isn't a whole lot of incentive that we can provide that gets that, that deep level of affordability. Those units typically are, almost always have to be subsidized. The next greatest need is at 50% and below. So, and we have a greater, we have a, a great need for affordable housing across the board. So I think the, the, the best answer I can give to the commissioners is what the community tells us, what the statistics tell us, is we need all kinds of affordable housing. Our greatest need is at the lower incomes. So what we're asking for here is if there is a preference in terms of, of sort of your, your sense of whether you would like just to put more emphasis on getting the deeper affordability or the just more affordable units. So what I would suggest is that we come back with a little bit of more information about that for the public hearing. And we can just give you a quick synopsis of what's in that, what's in that study, if that would be helpful.
I think that would be useful. Thank you.
And, and, and that's a good point because when we did the housing strategy, we did do a pretty extensive outreach and had a series of focus groups, including affordable housing developers, special services providers, including senior, senior services providers. So we do have that, that feedback that we got at that point, not specifically about this issue, but that, that definitely addressed the issue. Broader issue.
Okay, so Dave, you want to let us know what the next steps are on this?
So next steps, we'll be coming back in two weeks in public hearing. And we'll do our best in that fairly short turnaround to, to get, do some of that outreach, some additional outreach. And I also think that the, the applicant will have a, a pretty good handle on, be able to at least get their perspective on, on the need. And, and the intent is to come back with a package that you could make a recommendation on. But we're also holding the potential for continued hearing on August 5th.
All right, thank you. So I would propose we take a brief five-minute break while Bruce queues up Canyon Park presentation. And we come back at, by the clock in this room, 7:25. Work for everyone? Okay.
Hey Bruce. Are we live right now?
Probably. Or at least not live.
We've got that.
Okay, so Rachel, Bruce, you see the presentation is up?
Yes.
Okay, see that? So I think one of the takeaways is we need to be very clear about the, the questions as we go along here. Turn up.
Bruce, is there a section here that you think we need more input on than that it is running late?
Yeah, transportation is the one that's really a key right now. I would like to get a little, we, I guess in theory, we could even start with that if we so desire. Haven't we talked to them about that already to some extent? The approach, yes, but now we've got these two really big questions about the 214 street extension. So this is why you want to have a good conversation with the commissioner. Okay, then maybe just zero in on those? I think that would work for me. How about you, Rachel?
Yeah, just skip ahead to the 214 and the information about the number of trips on 214 tonight and
Yep.
Some final thoughts on that. Because we did talk about that last time.
We did, yes. And that I, it really needs to be a focus because that's coming up real quick. Quickly, quickly. Yeah, I thought we had quite a bit of discussion last time on some of the different transportation alternatives. I, I just want to make sure that we're not, not rehashing previous questions. And some of, we have some additional information that we didn't have in the last study session as well, so.
So do, should we skip ahead to the transportation section and then if we have time, come back to the others? Okay.
What are we skipping over? Is it just the land use portion?
There's some intro to urban design ideas, like the neighborhood center streets, the focus of those. And there's an economic development question about the, not the innovation hub, a cluster of life science businesses. Which I wonder if that's one we could just skip today because we've already got good policies for it. I don't see any reason to not do it.
Exactly, yep.
And I'm, yeah, we could just skip that one?
Cool pictures. Yes. Rachel, Rachel came up with those. They're awesome. Okay, so, well, you tell me, where do you want to start this? Keep on going. We'll scream at you when we're ready to say, hold on. There we go, right there. So most of these are on the transportation.
Most of them, but there's a little bit on the farm.
Right, I was gonna say, the, the, yeah, the one from Anagard is on, so we can make sure that we come back to that.
The guards are also on that.
This is on land use and I believe
Stormwater, that's on stormwater.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, the, the stormark, tangent pond and the park area up on the hillside, Rachel. Okay, can we make sure we come back to those then, Bruce? Give him a shot. Okay.
All right, so we've got about five minutes until we go back on.
Sure.
All right, it is now 7:26. And I'm going to call the July 1st meeting of the Bothell Plan and Commission back to order so that we can begin our, or resume our study session on the Canyon Park sub-area plan update we discussed in the previous meeting. So with that, we have Senior Planner Bruce Blackburn with us for at least a little while longer to lead us through this discussion. Bruce?
Good evening. With me as, as well is Rachel Miller of Makers Architecture and Steve Morikawa, I believe was going to try to attend as well. He is the Capital Projects Manager. Steve, are you there? I don't hear him, so.
I am here, Bruce. Bruce, I am here.
Okay, thank you Steve. In any event, we're skipping over a few sections because we really kind of focus on the transportation approach and some of the transportation questions we have for the commission that we really need to get through to get a little bit better understanding as we go forward with this. On the 17th of June, we talked about the transportation approach and we identified what the planning commission ideas were. Next slide, please. And we also talked about improving the connectivity within this area, basically through some new street extensions that were pretty important for a level of service meeting, meaning the level of service standards, as well as providing some new bike intersections and some new bike paths. Next slide, please. One of the elements we talked a little bit about was the level of service. And that's basically the amount of delay that we have. And we talked about with bat lanes and without bat lanes. And with the 214th street extension and the, without the 214th street extension, again, we identified that on the Bothell Everett Highway or 527, without the 214th street extension, we go to a level of service F and an 86-second delay. And that is based upon the current comp plan configuration, which is in the lower right-hand corner. That basically you have three general purpose lanes, north and south. No bat lanes, just general purpose lanes. Next slide, please. Now, we talked a little bit about the concept of bat lanes. And bat lanes are basically business and transit and, business access and transit lanes. It basically allow a dedicated lane for buses as well as right-in and out turns. And we want to basically identify that this is the preferred approach that we come up with, with our different agencies. As well as, of course, this would convert outside general purpose lanes to bat lanes. Now, community transit, as we identified, was pretty supportive of this. Somish County would be supportive, but they wanted to have this discussion as a regional approach that just makes all the sense in the world. This would be a future coordination effort. This does increase congestion on the Bothell Everett Highway. And if you look at the lower right-hand corner again, that's showing the bat lanes on the outside and the two general purpose lanes, north and southbound. Now, Rachel, did you want to add anything to this? Just scream at me when you, when you are.
Okay, I, I, I would just emphasize that regional approach, that this, this is the long-term goal and it's pending regional support and agency support for this project.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah.
Next slide, please. This is some information that we were not able to have on June 17th. This is brand-new information that we've got now. This talks about when we do that switch, the outside lanes convert into bat lanes. And then again, this is projected up to the year 2043. You can see what that does to our level of service on all of the corridors with and without the extension. Primarily what you see in the lower right-hand corner is what that would look like. You see again, the two lanes, north and south, and the outside bat lane. What you can see is that we do have quite an increase in the amount of delay without the 214th extension with this converting to bat lanes. And this is a really important feature that we really didn't have a chance to talk to you about the last one. But we just wanted to make sure the commission understands what this means. I know, again, Rachel, why don't you interrupt me when I, if I've missed a point or Steve as well, please?
So the planning commission asked us last time to come back with numbers of trips that are taking 214, that could potentially be taking 214 and what that impact would be on Ninth Ave. So we did learn that it's 800 trips would be the potential number of trips in the preferred alternative. On 214th, about 400 of those would go north, about 400 south. I'm talking about the peak hour traffic. And so what that means is that with no 214th street extension overall, for total ADT on Ninth Ave during peak hour and the no-action alternative, it's 1,400 trips with no 214th street extension. In the preferred alternative, that increases to 1,700 trips. And then with the 214th street extension, Ninth Ave would see 1,800 in no action and 2,100 in the preferred alternative. And I know I just threw a lot of numbers at you. But what that means is that with the preferred alternative expected growth, there's an average of 28 cars per minute with no 214th extension and an average of 35 cars per minute. and an average of thirty-five cars per minute with the extension.
So I think it would also be good for Steve, can you do a little bit of an explanation as to what delay means and how that's calculated? Because I think the Commission would benefit from that kind of a discussion, if you would, please?
Sure. Um, and please bear with me, I'm not a hardcore traffic engineer, so I will try to explain it and hopefully I might be coming at it from a more of a layperson point of view. So what you're looking at is actually an average of delay for each intersection over the corridor. So you have to understand, as an example, if you look at the 524 corridor, those are basically the average delay at each intersection only over about three, three intersections, okay? If you look at the 527 corridor, it's a little misleading in the sense that the 527 corridor goes all the way from 524 all the way down to 522. So in the south portion, where we just finished a lot of our intersections, we're getting better performance and obviously if we get a lot more growth at Canyon Park, it's not really going to affect the level of service in the south that much. So what you really have to keep in the back of your mind is the level of service is really going to be affected between 524 and 228. That's really the area that's mostly affected and where most of the additional delay is going to occur. And that delay occurs at every intersection. This is not a total of a hundred twelve seconds over the entire corridor. It's a hundred twelve seconds average per intersection that you go through. So if you go through four intersections in one mile, you have to multiply that out and that's kind of the delay you're seeing. 228, either way we go, it's not changing much. Whether we put Bat Lanes or no Bat Lanes, essentially you're going to get level of service E. So that's a good thing. I also want to point out that we still have to figure out where the Bat Lane's southern limit would be. I think the diagram shows it across the I-405 bridge, but we're not quite sure that would happen because we obviously would have to work with Washdod because we only have two lanes in each direction. Um, yeah, I think that's what I can offer up, Bruce.
Thank you, Steve. So I think the next slide... Oh, I'm sorry, this identifies our policy questions, my apologies. So this is the policy questions that we'd really like to get some input from the Commission on. And it's pretty straightforward, should 214th Street be extended from the Bothell Everett Highway to Ninth Avenue? And if it's not extended, that means the city's going to have to accept a lower level of service for that portion of the Bothell Everett Highway when we convert to general purpose lanes to Bat Lanes. And that would be the question to me, is that an acceptable trade-off? So I'm just going to let the Commission dive into these questions unless anybody has anything more to add on the team's side. But I think we just want to tackle these two big ones right off the bat. So I will stop and let you go.
Okay, so Commissioner Peastrop.
Thanks for the presentation. Kurt, can you clarify these Bat Lanes? This is not going to be used for high occupancy vehicles either, correct?
Well, right now, it probably would not. It would try and be a transit focus. That's kind of the focus. Very similar to what you see through the city at Kenmore on Bothell, uh, both, uh, sorry, 522. It's basically a, you know, a right turn in and out and transit facility vehicles.
Okay. Yeah, I've seen outside lanes act as HOV lanes as well. And to answer your first question regarding the extension, I don't think we can talk about extension until improvements are done along Ninth Avenue from a safety perspective. If those are getting done, then I think it's something to be discussed, but until that happens or if it's not going to be done, I'm, I'm, I'm very much against that extension.
And I do know that the Commission has identified that the 214th extension would only occur with improvements to Ninth Avenue. So that was something that we actually are built into a policy. But the big question is, we even make that extension?
Thank you. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Gustafson?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a point of clarification. At the last meeting, we had discussed three different options, which were the Bat Lanes or having transit that was further into the business park or doing a reversible lane. And right now, it seems like we've moved to Bat Lanes as the decision. Is that the case?
And, and I apologize if that seems to be what we're looking at. It is the best-case scenario so far in our discussion with the other agencies. Certainly, the roadway through the middle of the park is a very convenient way for local access, uh, transit. Basically, the smaller-sized buses, not necessarily if you're bus rapid transit, like the Green Line and some of the rapid lines that we're going to be seeing with Metro as well as, of course, the, well, sound transit will come up down here. So the Bothell Everett Highway is continuing to be a very important bus rapid transit functionary north-south route for us. The center turn lane was identified by Community Development, uh, sorry, Community Transit, pardon me, as a real concern they had. They just thought that the logistics were going to be so tough that they wouldn't be able to really figure out a way to do it because on and off at different locations, you know, you'd have to approach it from one, the bus from one side or another. They were just concerned about all those kind of logistical items that they said, "Look, it just doesn't function very well." They are very much more in favor of Bat Lanes themselves.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Aldrich?
Jenny Aldrich here. I want to echo Commissioner Peastrop's thought that could, it hasn't been something we have discussed, but could it be that these, these Bat Lanes could also be used as HOV lanes to get commuters through?
Uh, you know, I think it's a possibility. I believe we saw a little bit of discussion at one of our inter-agency committee meetings we had that some of the members were saying, "Yes, but when you open it up to HOV, you have a lot of violations." I think that was one of the things we were looking at. And partly, this is based upon the Commission's previous direction, which is to make transit a priority. That is a really important item that we heard very clearly from the Commission, as well as some of our other constituents as well. But the Commission was very strong on transit as a priority.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce or Rachel, but the way the rapid ride is functioning currently, they are stopping in the travel lane. They're not pulling off. So any commuters that were behind the buses would be stopping at every bus stop.
There's locations that does that, yes. I can, I can tell you, I have been behind one of those too.
Which is preferred by transit.
It is, yes.
So this is Steve. So you have quite a, Bruce and Rachel came up with quite a suite of options that, you know, there's all different combinations that have different effects. As an example, if you want to really promote transit, you would put Bat Lanes in there for the BRT and that would give the most advantage to the transit agency of getting reliability and good travel times through. If you change it to HOV lanes, you're going to somewhat mute the advantage for transit and you'll get more traffic through. It's not going to be, um, so you're balancing it a little bit more. On the other end of the spectrum, the way Public Works is kind of looking at it as these combinations, as an example, if we really want sound trans, if we really want BRT to function well, we would put Bat Lanes in there and that would be one end of the spectrum. To somewhat mitigate those Bat Lanes, I mean, you can imagine the amount of traffic that three lanes would put through versus two lanes in each direction. So by taking one lane away, you really are going to dramatically affect the delay in that short corridor. It's about point nine miles between I-405 and 524. And we're talking about literally adding a few minutes of delay through that corridor for a car that's driving through there. So the way Public Works is looking at it is as a total system. As a total system, grid systems work really well. And if we want that Bat Lane in there, putting the 214th connector would kind of mitigate some of that delay down that corridor and help us support transit without blowing up our whole system. And that's kind of what I think is being offered up right now as one of the combinations.
Commissioner Kurt, I think I saw you raise your card earlier.
Sure, thanks and thanks for the presentation. So a couple of things here, just a point of clarification from my previous comments last, last meeting. I was talking about how the city of Everett was looking at Bat Lanes for the Swift Blue Line. Well, I did a little bit more research and it was actually the city of Linwood in 2002 that installed Bat Lanes across their whole jurisdiction on Highway 99 for, in preparation of rapid transit from community transit. At that time, it was sound transit stuff, but anyway, the city of Everett also investigated adding Bat Lanes to Recker Avenue, which is the northern extent of Swift Blue Line, in 2005 prior to development and they decided against it due to right-of-way restrictions. And so here, there are different issues at play, but in general, I'm a little bit more receptive to maybe adding Bat Lanes to the Bothell Everett Highway because it's, it's got to be part of a regional approach as what happened in Linwood and Everett to facilitate the first phase of Swift. The infrastructure was put in place before rapid transit was installed. And so it's kind of like for people who are tech-oriented, it's the hardware before the software. Here, we have Swift already, but our hardware is sort of lacking. And so putting forward some major structural issues is going to cause some issues because we have some certain expectations about what the corridor can support right now. But if we had realistically approached this with hardware modifications earlier on, we probably would have done Bat Lanes, if not separated busway, if we had all the right-of-way necessary to do so. So I think that adding Bat Lanes is, it makes the most sense. It also makes the most sense if it's part of a regional approach with Snohomish County and City of Mill Creek so that the buses don't have to stop in traffic lanes. That is by design so that they don't have to pull out because the buses, people don't wait for the buses to yield. And so, yes, I'm fully, this is just, your presentation just makes me support Bat Lanes all the more. In terms of the extension of 214th to Ninth Avenue, I took a walk over there and I'd encourage the other Commissioners to walk along 214th and take a look at that infrastructure and the quality of the wetlands on either side. They're pretty low-quality right now. There's, they're severely degraded. And I think that as any sort of, you know, it would be encouraging to put through a street extension and mitigate the traffic impacts to the community, but also some of the wetland issues there. I mean, the, the wetlands are already severely degraded and so hopefully, as part of an extension, there would be not just mitigation to the level of what the wetlands are at now, but improvement of function overall. I think that the community currently on 214th would probably be more receptive to an extension of 214th if some of the wetland issues were mitigated as well. So that's my updated opinion. I'm warming up to the possibility of an extension. One, given safety improvements on Ninth Avenue, and two, given improvement of wetland function.
Okay, other Commissioners? Commissioner Bleak?
Well, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Kurt, for recommending we walk that area. I was going to say something different before what you said about the wetland quality. So I guess, I guess to show you, it does help to walk through these things. I'm in favor of the Bat Lane at this point in time. I am in favor of them. I was, I guess I'll need to walk that area. I was starting to think about the costs associated with putting a road through as well as the road improvements that are needed on Ninth Avenue. Commissioner Peastrop's bringing that up. I really appreciate that. And I know that we're going to put those improvements on Ninth before we do any kind of extension of 214th. Initially, was more in favor of just the pedestrian or bicycle 214th cut-through or extension, but I'm going to have to go and walk that area. But I am in favor of the Bat Lane at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bleak. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Gustafson? Mute, can't hear you.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks also to Commissioner Kurt and Commissioner Bleak for sharing their hands-on and feet-on experience with 214th. I think the quality of the wetlands there is actually a really interesting question. My first question is that I've heard that it might be a Class 1 wetland, which is actually a higher level of protection. I'd like to hear where the Class 1 wetland is in the creek system. Does it actually intersect with 214th? Also, the mitigation, I like the idea of mitigation if it can provide a net benefit and be in the area. And that was something I was unclear about in the packet. I was reading that the mitigation might actually take place in Redmond, which would be far out of the area. And the reason why I'm saying this is for me, one of the main reasons we are concentrating growth into the subarea is to protect our green spaces, but if we destroy wetland, even if it's already degraded to support the growth, then we've missed the point of density. So with that said, right now, I am for a pedestrian and bike path. I think that might have some small impacts that could be mitigated in a way that would actually allow people in nature to thrive together. I understand that pedestrian and bike path only would create a lot more traffic impacts and I thank Steve for bringing this up. My question to that is, we would need to also look at the people throughput and not just the car throughput in order to really understand the impact of 214th or doing 214th or not doing 214th. So there were several questions in there and I'm happy to step aside and let folks take.
Bruce, Rachel?
I was gonna, go ahead, Rachel.
Yeah, the first question that was about wetland impacts, I'm just going to read from the Ecological Report, Impact Assessment Report for a second here. So unfortunately, they were not able to access some areas just because they were private property for verification, but the boundaries are presumably mostly consistent with Bothell's GIS database and their classification is estimated as category two or three. This is near the Crystal Creek Townhome, so there's a little nuance here later though. And then the wetland features located on the north and south sides of the existing portions of 214th are preliminarily rated as category one and category two. Both wetlands are relatively large, high-functioning features. The wetland on the north, then there's more detail, more detail there. Does that answer your question for now?
Yes, it does seem that there might be a disconnect between how the wetlands look and how they are rated, perhaps?
Yes. And, oh, I was going to say, and if I may, being a former wetland certificate holder, the size is a huge factor. And that's basically what 214th is rated so highly is because it is very large, not necessarily because the individual function is great. It's just really, really large. And it includes the really high-quality wetland area that's north of here in the Centennial Park area, where we have a braided channel in North Creek. If you ever get a chance to go down there, take your waders, but it's really pretty cool up there. So it's kind of this holistic system, even though the parts, and as you walk along 214th, as Commissioner Kurt did, you're going to say, "Oh, this doesn't look all that hot." And it's just the size component that really adds it to the higher rating in this situation.
And Bruce, that higher value portion is outside of the impact of this project, correct?
Probably most of it is, yes. The issue is that the wetland is considered one feature. So, I mean, yeah, any, any part that is impacted is, is assigned that higher category.
Okay, other commissioners? Commissioner Olson?
I support the bat lanes. I wouldn't wanna see them as carpools as much as I might be able to use them as a carpool and someone who lives right near there. I think we have to prioritize transit. That's how we're gonna make a difference. As Commissioner Kurt said earlier, with the council's climate change goals and everything, we have to prioritize transit. I do support the 214th extension. I almost wonder if, if the environment becomes a concern, would something like a one-way road be a compromise? Where you could go west, like going home west, but people couldn't funnel through to go to the freeway if they're going east? So you can only go up the hill? I don't know. I, I am absolutely not a traffic engineer. But that's the only thing I think of. But I, I do lean towards saying yes on the extension.
The only item I would identify if it was one way is that you'd be advantaging or disadvantages somebody. You might be putting more of an impact on the neighborhood because they couldn't even use the road to get to maybe an employment center or something like that. So that, that's always a tough decision as to which way the one-way goes.
And I would wanna point out too that Bruce and Rachel are being very careful in how they describe in, in the text that road to give us some flexibility. Because if we just say collector and you look at our standard cross-section, it's a three-lane roadway with five-foot bike, five-foot planters and a five-foot sidewalk and gets very wide. Well, typically, if you have a large wetland on one side of the road, nobody's gonna be taking a left turn there. So you probably don't need that center turn lane, so that can reduce your cross-section somewhat. If you have wetlands, you also probably don't wanna put a planter there because although the trees look nice, why eliminate five foot of the wetland if you're just gonna put a planter that you're gonna have to maintain and now it's an upland? That doesn't quite make sense either. The other thing we really wanted to point out as well is, it would give us the option of maybe putting like a shared-use trail. And that's very important for us for a couple of reasons. If you have bike lanes on the roadway, it just adds impervious surface that the car droppings, the oil and everything, it, it combines into creating more surface area that catches not clean surface water that you have to treat. Whereas if you have a separate trail that just has pads and bikes on top of it, you don't really have to worry about the water quality. And in some cases, you probably may not even have to worry about detention as well. So I think by putting that in our back pocket and allowing the staff to go and minimize those impacts, that's one way we, we're looking to minimize the impact of that road if it's decided to put through.
Commissioner Alder?
My mute button went missing. Thank you. I, I really appreciate what you just said. Because it sounds like there might be some possibilities of, and, and maybe I'm just reading into what you said, but the possibility of creating somewhat of a buffer between the road and the wetlands by adding a trail. Would that somehow mitigate the, some of the runoff and environmental impacts? If we were to choose, then instead of having bike lanes, we would have trail for pedestrian and bike? Maybe that hasn't been suggested or no one has been, no one has mentioned that, but I kind of heard that in what you were saying.
And I would, Bruce is the expert, so I'll let him talk about it. But I think the way I would categorize it is we would reduce the impact, but it would still be an impact because a trail is still an impact on a wetland.
And you haven't seen some of the pedestrian-bike conflicts, I guess. Bruce, I, I think reissues have been raised. Am I muted? No. There seems to be unanimity about safety improvements on 9th.
Yes.
Nodding heads on that. I'm hearing a pretty strong support, if not unanimity, on the bat lane. Is that also correct? And where the discussion lies now is 214th, whether it be vehicles and pedestrians or just pedestrian bikes?
Yes. Now, fortunately, we don't have to make a decision tonight because we really shouldn't make a decision in a state session. But we just wanted to get a, an understanding from the commissioners to where they would like to be. Because as, as you know, we're gonna be entering the public hearing process and we just wanna be able to have an understanding of where the commission is thinking so that we can prepare our documentation better.
So I'll ask the commissioners, is there any specific information, additional information beyond what's been discussed which would help you come to a conclusion on 214th? Commissioner Alder first, and then Gustafson, and then Bleak.
No, I thought you were gonna ask about the bat lane. And you said 214th instead, so it's on to Commissioner Gustafson.
I, I thought I heard pretty much unanimity on the bat lanes. If I'm, was incorrect there, we can go back. You?
You, Chair Keenan, for giving us one more chance to weigh in. As you might guess, I would like more clarity on the mitigation efforts. My understanding is also that unfortunately, as much as we might want no net benefit to be a standard for mitigation, that ecology laws say that mitigation might only be no net loss, which is pretty technical, but I don't know if we can override ecology here. And also, if net benefit mitigation is allowed, would it be in the sub-area? And generally, more clarification on those questions or explanations if I've missed something. Thank you so much.
Okay, Bruce, so got that for the next round? Okay, Commissioner Bleak? So you're gonna get?
I'm so sorry. I'll get this figured out for next time. One question I would like to ask of staff, I don't want them to spend very, very much time on it. And I, so I guess, I wanna get more of a ballpark idea about how expense, what's the expense to the city for putting in an extension on 214th? Like, what, what are we talking about? How many millions of dollars are we talking about to put that road through? I believe that city finances are extremely tight right now and are gonna be for some time. And I think we need to be really careful about putting in, putting in any new additional roads. I'm not a big fan at this point in time that regards to climate change of putting in new roads and instead of working with what we have more smartly. So if we could have like, an idea of just, not necessarily improvements on 9th Avenue, but just what it would cost to push that road through. Thank you.
Steve, I'm not sure if you wanna respond to that. We do have cost estimates for these projects. And I, I have the information if we want to share it, but I'm gonna leave that to Steve at this point to put it in the context of the overall city budget and how it's examined.
So when we do a comprehensive plan, the transportation element essentially tries to quantify what the road improvements or transportation improvements are needed to support the land use growth. And they're typically not cheap. I believe the extensions, whether you're talking about the 9th Avenue Extension North, sorry, the 20th Extension North, or if you're talking about the 214th Extension to the West, they're probably under order of about $20 million, okay? And that's including mitigating for the wetland, putting fish passage culverts where they're necessary, that currently there might just be regular culverts. Those are quite pricey as well. So, so it accounts for the environmental impact as well. To put it a little bit in context, we still have to add the third lane in portions of 527. And that's probably somewhere between $10 and $15 million. On 9th Avenue, to bring it up to, if we were to make it into a full collector like it's supposed to be, and that's currently on our comprehensive plan now. This is not a sub-area additional project. It's already a project in our transportation needs list. That's probably under order of $20, $25 million because you actually have to put a third lane in there. You have to put bike lanes, you have to put curbing gutter, you have to put sidewalks, you have to put lights, you have to treat all the stormwater that you're creating the impervious surface for. You have to mitigate wherever you have impacts, including some streams that we're crossing. So it gets very pricey. I will say that in this particular area, one of the challenges in the transportation aspect is we don't have very many entrances and exits to this sub-area, this, the, the heart of the sub-area. And it's very important to try to get that connectivity because if you only have, you know, literally three, like we have today, two of which go to 527, it's very difficult to get people in and out. And you have to also understand that we're trying to get transit in and out as well. So it's not just the cars. We, with the transit, even though they have the bat lanes, they still need to get through the intersections and they still need to take a left turn or a right turn into the business park. So those become kind of choke points. So you need a certain level of systematic support for that transit as well. I also wanna just say one more thing too about traffic. We talk about everybody being on transit and I'm, I'm, I'm right there with Bruce and Rachel on supporting the transit in the long run. But you also have to understand that if you have, in the next 15, 20 years before you get your full system up, cars waiting in line and stacked at intersections, that creates CO2 as well because they're just waiting in line for five minutes for a mile versus, you know, three minutes and getting through there. You just have more cars in that local area creating CO2 as well. So it's very difficult. I think it's kind of a balance and it's kind of a, I think it's very important we look to the future and try to get people into alternative modes. But we also have to balance that a little bit, that you have to have a certain amount of system to support that as well. It's not an easy exercise, so we're doing a very difficult balancing act.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioner Kurt?
Thanks. Not to belabor your point, but I was wondering, Steve, if the analysis takes into account, there's a bridge over North Creek on 214th. And when I was looking at it, it looks like it might need to be improved if 214th capacity is extended. I'm sure that's expensive and I just wanted to check in with you to see if that was part of your analysis or not.
That actually is part of analysis. And frankly, if you ask me, I'd like to leave that bridge, which is fairly new. I happen to be a structural engineer. We'd like to keep that bridge there and if we want to put, improve that road, my recommendation would be to create a ped bridge and bike bridge, separate from it, just with a separate trail. That would likely be a lot cheaper than trying to widen the bridge and make it viable for both bikes, pets, and cars. And I think it would probably have a less of a footprint in terms of environmental impact.
Excellent. Thank you.
So Bruce, do you think you have what you need to bring this to the next round?
We do. Thank you very much. I think we are gonna go on to the next questions, which I don't recall what they are. But we'll get back on the PowerPoint and we'll find it out. So that got us through the big part on transportation. Let's kind of, if you wouldn't mind, Michael, kind of going through here. Rachel, was there something in particular you were thinking about?
No, I think the next big question is TDM and what level of support we wanna do for that. So just a little bit of background on that, just to remind people what TDM is, or Transportation Demand Management. That is all of the facilitation and work that businesses in the city and agencies in the region can do to help spread out the trips and reduce trips, particularly into the business center here. So that could be working with the businesses to figure out how to stagger shifts and support working from home. It could be having much more paid parking. I think Mike mentioned earlier unbundled parking and that's another option, making sure that people have to pay for parking if they're living in the area. As well as some other strategies that might include like Orca Pass support and ways of connecting people to transit. When we were meeting with the life sciences folks, they were very interested in a local circulator shuttle and they were interested in self-organizing around it as well, which was exciting. So those kinds of first and last mile, getting you to and from the high-capacity transit and, and local transit and into the, to, to their jobs and homes. So the downside of it is that it's challenging and complicated and takes a ton of somebody's time to organize all of this and support the work in an area to do it. It doesn't just happen on its own. And so we are trying to understand what the level of support for this is, knowing that it could mean another staff person being dedicated to this, that it, that it would take city resources to really make this happen. Is there any other background you wanted to give on that, Steve, before we move to the policy question?
I guess I'd have a question for you and Bruce. Did you guys talk about the parking? How, how to make parking support that or?
Do you mean in terms of reducing parking minimums for new developments?
Or cap?
Parking caps? Yeah, we've actually started that discussion.
Okay, great. So I would just echo what Rachel says. I think this is a hugely important piece of this area being a success. The way we looked at the transportation system, like I told you, was we're pretty much built out in two dimensions. And anything else to get more vehicles in there would make us go three-dimensional, which means great separation, which nobody wants and nobody can afford. So TDM is a huge part of the transportation component. One of the things we wanna make clear though, and I think probably we'll bring it up at the council, is there's gonna have to be a commitment financially to get this off the ground, like Rachel said. It's not something current staff can do. We've talked to some experts in the field that have done this in Oregon as well as in Seattle and I think a city or two elsewhere in Western Washington. And it takes, it takes a staff or two to start it up, at least in the first few years. And eventually, there's typically like three or four staff that are funded through various means like Rachel just talked about. So I think that the city is very interested in being progressive and trying to get people out of cars. There's gonna have to be some commitment with it. It's not just a plan, it's actually a commitment to do this. And we think it's very important that the cities start doing something like this.
So the question presented is, should the city employ TDM? Implement a TDM program, but if it means employing additional staff? We are really limited in the capital improvements to address traffic. This is another way to do it. Any questions or comments from the commissioners on this particular question? Commissioner Kurt?
Thanks. I know that in Kirkland, City of Kirkland, they have transportation element of their comprehensive plan is under the purvey of an active transportation commission instead of planning commission. Is that something that the city would be looking at employing instead of, like having a focus group, basically, like a full-time focus group on, on traffic issues? I know that whenever I go to public meetings or whenever I hear public comment at council, there's always people that are upset about traffic. I mean, it's a perennial issue in the city of Bothell, probably all through Western Washington. But I don't think that there's a lot of, you know, political expediency against having constituents' needs be met and their concerns be investigated. So I'm, I'm just kind of wondering what that might look like a little bit more.
Director Codeman, you wanna?
I guess I can take a crack at that. Would that be specific to the? Yeah, would that be specific to the TDM or are you talking citywide generally?
I mean, it could be citywide in general, but specifically, I mean, when I've been I mean, when I've been at, you know, the public meetings for North Creek and not North Creek, excuse me, Canyon Park, it's consistently brought up and I think that there's a lot of public concern about it. And maybe having a, giving more direction to the public comments could be more helpful. So I'm just wondering if maybe a, a commission or a, like a, if not a specific, you know, staff time would be required for a commission too, but I mean, there's a sliding scale. How, how far are we willing to go on this?
So we talked to, like again, we talked to some of the TDM experts and you can have staff do it. That's one way to do it. The way they've done it before and they think works better is actually to have a third party. So essentially the city funds the staff upfront. And this third, third party essentially tries to work with transit agencies, private business, as well as the city to create a partnership that everybody buys into. Eventually, that has to be funded somehow. As an example, in Gold Lloyd in the city of Portland, they just happened to have a lot of street parking and the city has essentially allocated the profits from the street parking to this TDM or the TDA essentially in that area. So there's good points about doing that because people tend to talk to a third party and feel they're a little bit more objective rather than the city dictating what's going to happen. So that is certainly something we would look for. And I think that's a detail and a methodology. At the end of the day, the city would still have to make a commitment. They're just not paying staff. They're paying some outside party to facilitate this process.
And, and just, this is my Cotterman, and I think to, to address a couple of things that Commissioner Kurt brought up. One, I think what Steve mentioned is it is more like, it sounds like a transportation commission that you're describing that's really dealing with bigger transportation issues, similar to a planning commission that's more focused on the long range planning and typically more land use, although we get into quite a bit of transportation here as well. So if the, if the city council did want to create a new commission, they would need to define what the charge of that commission would be, you know, what role would they have? For example, would they have a role in making recommendations on the prioritization of projects for the, the trans, the, the tip, TIP? Some places do that, some don't. They're just more of a policy body. So I think that's yet to be defined. How that relates to the TDM though, I think is, picking up on what Steve was talking about, I wouldn't see the commission really having a role in managing any kind of a, of a program like that. They might provide some policy direction or recommendation to the council and how that would be done. And what we're asking of the commission today is not whether or not the city should hire a staff person to, to do that. That's really going to be the council's decision once we get to that discussion, either through this process or a future budget process. It's more how much emphasis do you want to put on TDM? Understanding that if that is a critical piece to this, which is what our analysis is, is showing, do you want to make that a priority as, as far as the recommendations as well? Is that, looking at Rachel and Bruce, is that a fair way to characterize what we're looking for?
I think so.
Commissioner Alder.
Thank you Chair. Jenny Alder's here. So my question, I guess to both Commissioner Kurt and, and for the city, that if there was to be a plant, a transportation commission, then would there just by necessity need to be a planning commissioner coordinator? Like a, a person, sorry, not planning, but for transportation, would there have to be a new staff person hired by the city to oversee and work with that commission? And would that then be sort of the same thing as hiring somebody to manage TDM? Or would a transportation commission make it to where it's not necessary to hire a TDM? So yes, yes, please. Commissioner Kurt, I'd like.
Want to respond to that question?
Okay, yeah, thanks for the, for the question, Commissioner Alder. My, I didn't mean to imply that the city should make a new commission. I was mainly focused on how is the city going to engage with the community? And in planning process, we're, we're the main way that the city can engage, the city constituent can engage with the the planning and code amendments. And so if something is specific to transportation, I don't know if, you know, council has the capacity to really investigate these things in as much detail as maybe the city's constituents would like, or maybe they do, I don't know. So I was just kind of throwing stuff out, spitballing, so maybe that wasn't a good idea to do.
If I could just tag along on that, I think that it, it would require staffing if there is, any kind of commission requires staffing. And I think that you don't necessarily need a transportation commission to engage public in discussions about transportation issues. So I would, I would just set that aside for now. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I think it's probably not within the scope of what we're, what we're looking for this evening.
Thank you Chair. Sarah Augustin here. I am in favor of aggressive TDM and aggressively seeking grants to support TDM, for example, from PSRC. Thank you, Rachel. And again, I don't know if we have the finances to support that in-depth transit outreach, but speaking to what Commissioner Kurt has said, I have a very, very granular question that I heard about from constituents about transportation and I would like to bring it up here. And I don't know if this is the right forum, but I'm just going to go for it. And that's about through block connections on page 63 of the packet. There is in the lower left-hand corner, and again, stop me if Commissioner, please Chair, if I'm going too far into detail. Page 63 of the packet.
Oh.
Saying figure one of the Canyon Park pedestrian bicycle plan.
Is that graphic in the PowerPoint, Bruce?
You've got it right there.
Okay.
It's not quite the same. It's, it's very close though, but if it's about through block connections, the one Bruce has up will work well enough.
Okay, actually, the reason why I'm referring to page 63 is because on page 63 in the lower left-hand corner, there is a note on a brown dotted line saying, work with property owners to identify route and establish easements. So just make sure that we're both talking about the same thing.
Yeah. I've got that up on my screen. Is there, would anyone like me to share my screen or we just know that that's what we're talking about?
Why don't we proceed?
Okay.
Great. And I'm wondering if this is the path that residents of 226th Street pointed out in the January Canyon Park meeting. They, I think this is the same route. I want to make sure that their voices were heard and that this is reflected in the through block connections. But they pointed out a dirt path that they use to get to 405 Station after crossing Ninth Avenue. And it goes past a hotel and here I am not as good of a walker as Commissioner Kurt. I don't know if they're referring to the Extended Stay or to the Hilton, but this trail needs bridge repair, lighting and publicity. So I wanted to make sure that we're all talking about the same path and that path is actually in the plan.
Yes, that path was a result of the Ninth Avenue discussion we had at the community meeting.
And it was in particular, talking with the property owner, was also in touch with the residents. But what I want to make sure is that we are talking about the same hotels. So I'm trying to pull up Google Maps.
It is the Extended Stay America.
Okay, good. Then that is the correct location. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So back to the specific question here, and now I flip my pages around. But it had to do with support for aggressive, should the city employ an aggressive transportation band management program, even if it means long-term commitment of staff resources? Commissioner Olson.
I agree with Commissioner Augustin that yes, absolutely. Seek grants, everything. Obviously, it's ultimately, ultimately up to the council if that will jibe with our current financial situation. But I think it's important to pass the recommendation on and make sure there's a discussion about, you know, whether we can do it because I think it will be important.
And I'm, this is a long-range plan. Bruce, what's our planning period?
20 years.
Hopefully beyond the current financial crisis, although I doubt money will ever be too free. So I'm going to ask for a show of hands. Well, anyone need any additional information to make a recommendation on this? We're not particularly looking for recommendation here now, are we?
No, no, just what would assist you in making a recommendation? Yes.
Okay, so I didn't see anyone weigh in, asking for additional information to make that recommendation out of view. I think we're good on this question. So where would you like to jump to now, Bruce?
I would like to go to the discussion about the natural environment and this whole wetland mitigation because we did receive a letter on that topic.
Yes.
And I believe it is toward the front of the presentation. Our driver will get us there, I'm sure.
It's this second one.
One more. If you would, go one more toward the back. Oh, well, maybe one more, I'm sorry. Oh. There we go, there we go, right here. Sorry. This was something that we received a letter on, as well as of course, Commissioner Augustin expressed some interest in this, about the concept of wetland and repairing mitigation and restoration. One of the things that we were really fortunate in that we had watershed, a, a pretty highly reputable in ecological consultant, if you would. Did a pretty good assessment on this and identified some options for impact mitigation based upon what happens with those road impacts. Now, we don't know what they're going to be totally, but what she has identified is Ms. Katie Saunders is that there are some areas where it makes a lot of sense to do some mitigation within the area. Of course, it, it's all dependent upon what your function and value you're trying to seek and how much wetland you have to create or restore or enhance. But they identified a number of possibilities, including along 214th Street Southeast, where we do have a very large wetland complex that has been degraded in the past and we have some places that have been cleared out for pasture or some other kind of agricultural activities. As well, they have a really interesting place just north of 228th Street and it's just west of 29th Avenue. As well as, of course, we have a lot of stream bank mitigation we have. We have a lot of areas where we could apply that. So there's a lot of options for it, including the notion of a wetland mitigation bank. Now, would you go to the next slide, please? I think that's where that is. Yes. One of the reasons we bring this up, and this is one of our policy questions, is we may have a situation where all the best efforts we can to mitigate within the sub area just doesn't work. So we may have to look at something else. One of the features that we have within this area, that's basically within the Smamish River watershed, is the Keller Farms Wetland Mitigation Bank. Now, one of the things I want to identify is that this has been certified by the Corps of Engineers and the Department of Ecology underneath the Wetland Mitigation Bank Program. The impacts are intended to offset the, you know, the, the loss or impact on wetlands within our watershed and North Creek, through this Canyon Creek, is within the water, Smamish River watershed. One of the features about this is one of the key elements here is that these wetland mitigation banks can provide better function and values than isolated onsite or within the area wet mitigation. A really good example of that is within Canyon Park, there's a couple of sites where we do have some small wetlands that were enhanced or created and they're isolated and they're just all by themselves. If you take a huge project area like this and start doing the impact mitigation out in these areas, you get a much larger bang for your buck within your watershed. And that's one of the things that I just kind of wanted to have the commission at least discuss because this is a viable option as far as the agencies are concerned. And they are the ones that really do take that charge very seriously. Now, Rachel, you probably are closer to the situation than I am, but could you maybe add to my discussion, please?
Yeah, I would just, if we could go back to the last slide for one second. I think Bruce, you touched on this, but the idea of this larger area, the top right image is really what Katie Crandall identified as the biggest and best opportunity in the Canyon Park sub area. As Bruce mentioned, these smaller piecemeal ones, the yellow parcels, I believe they were in the bottom right image, don't have as much of an effect, take a lot of work to coordinate all those little sites. So it might just be more challenging and not as much bang for your buck. And then there is the North Creek one as well. So I think the question is really that we know we have to mitigate all of our transportation impacts. And so then knowing that there are these options, as well as what I understand to be a city policy to mitigate onsite when possible. And so onsite here means the whole sub area. And so the question is how much do we balance that? How much do we really invest in? In, do we do these three projects first and then move on to the mitigation bank? Or do we say, well, what, what is that balance? Can we move to the mitigation bank earlier? Or where is that?
And if I could just piggyback on that. So the approach that we're looking at here is really to provide the staff with additional, additional tools and options if we need to go there. The way that the, the code is structured right now, and Bruce can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but in our critical areas ordinance, it's, there's a hierarchy of preferences and the, and the top preference is do it onsite. And it, and you have to show that you cannot do it onsite before you can go to the next option and so on and so forth. And this option of doing a wetland mitigation bank is really at the, one of the last options that's available. During the, the recent update to the Shoreline Master Program, and Commissioner Augustin can speak to this, she was on the Shorelines Board at the time, there was a lot of discussion about that particular approach and hierarchy. And the Shorelines Board recommended and the council adopted amendments that made it much more restrictive to be able to use wetland mitigation banks. What we're asking for here is a little bit more latitude in this area. And again, that would still have to go through the process of, of amending our code to, to make that a reality. But we're asking for some direction from the commission at least as to whether or not we can put this in the toolbox as something that would be available once we've exhausted those other options. Are there some, is the policy question coming up on the?
I think it's on the next page. Is that one? Yes.
So Commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Augustin.
First, I would like to, I feel like I might take over parts of this discussion, so maybe I would, anyone else go first? I have thoughts, maybe I'll just hold on for a second.
Did I see a card? There we go. We'll get you on. Okay, I think you're good. Yeah, give it a try.
Okay.
You're on.
Okay, sorry. I guess I, it's nice to be able to allow the city that possibility as a last resort for off-site mitigation, but I, I guess I just have a real problem with shifting, I mean, we, we have an opportunity here to have a really dynamic area, but also have some really strong wetlands and we already do in the area. I just, I don't know if I'm comfortable with shifting that to a different area. If it was a mitigation bank in the city of Bothell, I mean, all, the Smamish River watershed, we all share it in many jurisdictions together, but I don't think I'm comfortable. I don't think I'm comfortable in allowing that. I really want to see the wetland mitigation happen onsite. I feel like sometimes when you shift things to banks, I don't know, there's some, I'm not so confident that you, if you, if you take a hundred percent from one place, you get a hundred percent the other. So I feel like there's going to be some law. I feel gives us more control of the city over to be able to say, okay, we need wetland mitigation, we need to do it in the area. Thank you.
Hey, other commissioners, Commissioner Curd.
Thanks. I would echo Commissioner Fleet's comments. I'd also, from my perspective, one of the functions of a wetland in an urban area is stormwater flow control. And if we take this whole discussion and just blow it out of proportion and say if we pave over the entirety of Canyon Park and we mitigate the wetlands all in Redmond, we're losing the capacity of the wetlands here, no matter their, their size, their quality. Where there's going to be urban flooding in Canyon Park if we pave over the entirety of it. So that might not be the best, the reductionist approach might not be the best way to look at it, but from my perspective, it's not only just, you know, the ecological benefit as much as the structural and infrastructure integrity that these wetlands actually help, help provide as well. So I would be really hesitant, especially I know that the city of Bothell is probably never going to have its own mitigation bank just because it involves the Army Corps of Engineers. So I just don't think that it's ever going to happen here. And so I would just, I'm really hesitant to do that. And I know Commissioner Gus Gustafson is going to probably touch on this later, but there was considerable discussion in Shorelines Board about upstream versus downstream impacts and Redmond is upstream from us. And so we wouldn't really necessarily, if the salmon can't make it here to North Creek, then there's not really a purpose of improving habitat in Spanish. So anyway, I've said enough, but that's my.
Hey, other commissioners. Do you want to weigh in now?
I really want to thank Commissioner Curd and Commissioner Fleet. They've said it much better than I can, and I will let their words stand on this topic. I think we might want to get into Resident Agard's questions, but I think that's a little later.
From, from my perspective, I'm somewhat skeptical about poster stand size wetlands, both from habitat and a benefit. That said, the parcel north of 228th is quite large and I, I would have a hard time seeing you not be able to mitigate within this area as long as that chunk of property is available. So I, seems to me that the opportunities are available within this planning area. That's, that's my opinion. Bruce shaking his head, you want anything else from us?
Well, actually, I think that's pretty good because it was one of these things that we said, boy, if we do run into some kind of an issue or if it is that last resort kind of a thing, it's something that we could look into. So I think the commission is clearly, and of course, staff is supporting that, do it in the sub area directly.
Anything else on this one? Where would you like to go next, Bruce?
And Bruce, I'm not sure that we had a specific slide to address the buffer question. So do we want to just open that up as a question?
Sure. And I was gonna say, you want me to go or you want to go or?
Well, I'm actually trying to find it in the packet so that everybody knows what we're talking about or if.
We do have a letter that
The letter.
Yes.
Not in the packet, came separately.
No, it came separately, yes.
So one of the strategies that we brought up in the sub area plan was a buffer enhancement idea, and it's put in the preliminary draft. You may have seen it there in the land use section. And the idea was, and Bruce, please pop in whenever you'd like. The idea was that many of these developments developed prior to modern buffer standards, and so they often have narrower buffers than what would be required now. And so the one strategy to make development more feasible would be to potentially allow a narrower buffer as long as it does all of the functions that it would have done at the wider buffer. So using best available science to meet all of those functions. So Bruce, please add on if you, if you would like, but the idea behind it was for development feasibility. Knowing that we are trying to meet this growth level that the SRC is looking for to maintain the regional growth center designation.
Yes, and this would be something that would probably be applied to, I imagine redevelopment where somebody said, okay, I have an existing facility and a lot of times what we have, we have things like fire lanes or drive aisles or loading docks that if you actually were to take the actual measurement, it's actually in the buffer area. And the concept there is, okay, well, it's an area that's already been developed and we allow them to continue to use that area for development if they were to do something new there. And that's kind of basically the, the concept that we're trying to explore here is is that something that is feasible for us to think about? I will identify that quite a few jurisdictions do allow that type of flexibility just because they realize how difficult it is if you had a buffer that was forty five feet, you know, ten years ago, and now all of a sudden you have a seventy five foot buffer, it really makes redevelopment very, very difficult for people. And that's one of the things that we're going to have to face out here because this area is wonderful for natural areas, wetlands and streams, but also has an effect upon our developability. So we don't have a lot of information on this, but we have just seen a few of those kinds of examples where we just wanted to bring up this topic. I believe we are actually asked this by the Owners Association as well, is about some of those impacts we have as well as surface water facilities. So I'm just going to turn it back over to the commission and let the commission give us some ideas as to what they'd like us to provide them to make this decision.
So to clarify, Bruce, I see that, I think you raised the second issue there. I see there as being two issues. One is the buffers.
Yes.
What we are saying is it would not be any additional encroachment or impact on buffers being permitted. But where there is development, that would be allowed to continue going forward if there's redevelopment. Essentially grandfathering in that impact.
Yeah, it's kind of like a Noel grandfather clause. That's probably a better way to put it, yes.
Okay. And the second question is the stormwater, but let's stick with the buffers first.
Buffers first, yeah, sorry.
It's a little, it's a little bit different than grandfathering though, because you would have to raise the functionality of the area to the levels that it would receive at the wider buffer.
Okay, so you're improving the functionality, but not increasing the wetland footprint or the development footprint. The line would remain where it is.
Yes.
So Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Karen. I wanted to try to clarify the question that I believe Ann Agard is asking. I actually don't have an opinion on it, but yet. But I believe that Anna Guard is asking, is it even the appropriate venue for the planning commission in the sub area plan to be discussing this? Because these are questions that would need to be settled by the critical area ordinance. We cannot change it in the sub area plan.
Oh, I can, I can address that. So, yes, it is appropriate and because the sub area plan, each sub area could be treated a little bit differently, depending on the policies that the, that the council decides upon for those areas. So it is a policy question from that standpoint that the commission can make a recommendation to the city council as to whether or not you would like that policy or this particular ability applied in the, in the Canyon Park sub area. It doesn't necessarily mean it would be applied citywide. We are also in the process of updating our critical areas regulations and looking at wetland buffers. So it may inform that to some degree. Likewise, that work may inform this at some point and the council may decide to go back and revisit it. But the short answer to the, the question is, yes, this is an appropriate venue and appropriate time for the commission to weigh in on whether you think that this would be something to apply in the Canyon Park sub area.
Proceedurally, yes, we can weigh in. Then substantively, do people feel like they need additional information to weigh in at the appropriate time? I saw a couple of cards kind of tentatively go up. Are they up? Okay, Commissioner Gustafson and then Commissioner Curd.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Kieran. I must admit that even though I was a member of the Shorelines Board, some of the things I'm talking about, I don't really know what they mean. So I'm just going to throw that out there and hope to get more some more clarification. Also, are mitigation banks only allowed for compensatory mitigation? Are they not allowed for buffer reduction? Because it sounds like we're almost talking about compensatory mitigation in relation to the buffers, and I'd like to just get that clarified. We're not using any banks for buffer reductions, are we?
No.
Okay, thank you. And let's see. So, yes, I guess I would like some more clarification on just the kinds of buffer improvements allowed.
So if I can clarify, we discussed that this would mean in order to keep what I call the grandfathered boundary of the buffer encroachment, it would have to be improvement in the function of the buffer. And you're asking for how that would be defined?
Yes, I think so. I think perhaps some examples of the type of improvement, would you plant this many trees? Would you do this kind of action to the stormwater? Would be helpful. And again, I don't know if Canyon Park Plan is the right place to do that or to just say, hey, we're going to figure this out in the CAO, Critical Areas Ordinance, but I think we're on it.
So I think the question for staff then is if the recommendation were to be, yes, go with it like this, what would that look like? And Commissioner Curd, I think you had your card up.
Thanks. Yeah, my question is whether this is going to be a substantive decision or not. Are there a lot of properties in Canyon Park that have this sort of grandfathered buffer intrenchment or not? Or is it just a couple of, like a handful of properties that we're looking at? It's widespread. I want more information about it, but if it's only like five properties, I mean, this isn't, this is a different decision.
Yeah, and my estimate, I didn't actually count, but there's probably about, oh, maybe half a dozen that would probably have this kind of an issue as they do redevelopment and is primarily along the southern portion of the regional growth center toward, toward, basically well toward North Creek and some of those other areas down in that location. Most of the other areas have a pretty robust buffer already established. In fact, one of the things that's pretty impressive about this area was that the original development did a fairly decent job of establishing some pretty good sized buffers and, you know, in hindsight, considering the time. So, yeah, but yeah, there are mostly in the southern area and I would say it's less than ten probably.
I have four, four specific examples from Bruce in an email, and there may be additional.
Maybe we could identify those next time around. I walk this area a bit and my sense is that the North Creek Trail is between a lot of the development and the creek buffers here. I suspect the trail isn't going anywhere.
Yes, and, and trails are one of those items that's allowed to be within a buffer. So that is a acceptable land use within a buffer.
Okay, I understand. I'm a little difficulty hearing me. Does that help?
Oh, thank you.
That does help.
Okay. These aren't my headphones, so. Okay, so there were two questions raised. The second was stormwater. Do we want to say a few words about that?
Certainly. I'll go ahead and I'll lead off here. Essentially, what we have is that the Canyon Park area had this kind of almost a mini regional stormwater pond that was installed toward the southern portion of the property. And essentially what occurred was that one of the items the Owners Association has identified is they're really concerned about what future and current surface water requirements are going to apply on that area. In this situation, there's not a whole lot of choice. The city must comply with our current surface water design manuals. But it is a possibility that we might be able to do some regional, and I shouldn't say regional, some sub regional detention within the area. And one of the things I think that's going to be kind of interesting is that as we go through this and see how the new surface water manual is applied to the redevelopment, I think that it's again, going to be very feasible. One of the things our pro forma did looked very extensively at was the impact on surface water facilities on pieces of property, and we still had logical and feasible development with those surface water facilities. I'd turn it over to Rachel to add anything more.
Yeah, well, I guess I'll just yes, there's a variety of ways that stormwater is being addressed, and I'm not sure exactly what the specific question is about stormwater. So we can get to that in a minute. And yes, the, the idea of a sub regional detention center upgrading the existing one as well as there are possibilities for identifying an additional site, especially in the down the sloped areas from Upper Canyon Park, and there could be some kind of detention system. It could either be vaulting beneath a building or it could be more like park-like terracing going down the hill. So there are opportunities if property owners are interested in banding together and working on stormwater as a group rather than having to address it on each individual site. But the other option, and the other thing that is always at play is that stormwater is addressed at every site. There is a stormwater manual that all developments would follow. It's a much higher standard than previously and what these were mostly developed at. So stormwater would be detained and treated and infiltrate better with redevelopment than it would, than is what's currently out there in Canyon Park today.
I'm not sure if I'd characterize it as a concern or a question or how to exactly put it. But that large pond due to, I think, a lack of maintenance has developed some interesting habitat and a lot of waterfowl nests there. And I believe there are some mammals in there too. I've had a project where roadside ditch was called a wetland, so I'm not sure you're going to be able to get in there and scoop that out with having some significant impacts.
Okay.
Interestingly enough, we do have a, I think it's a, I don't recall the term. It's basically an HPA with the Fish and Wildlife Department about maintenance of those type of facilities. And you have a situation where the, the facility has not been maintained. We have very good documentation as to what the design of that facility was, and it's clearly a surface water detention pond. But as you point out, you allow it to silt over and you get all kinds of different features within that pond.
Looks a lot like a wetland.
It certainly does.
Okay, anything else you need on the stormwater question?
No, and that was mostly a question that we had from Roger Blanchard.
Carsten, Commissioner Curd.
Thanks. Not to belabor this point either, but the city of Seattle did a similar thing in South Park. There is a water quality, stormwater water quality system, a community system that was developed in South Park to treat water and also to prevent chronic flooding in the area. I would like to hear more maybe about what a community system might look like. I know that in the packet, there was information about the terrorist, a terrorist detention facility or a vault, and I'm not sure if that would. And I'm not sure if that would, that would probably require pumping of stormwater because it would be higher in elevation than where the water would be falling and be collected. And so that could represent a really extreme cost. And I know that the South Park facility, it, it entered into, well, it was developed and then there is issues with pumping. And so the location of a community system is pretty important to determine even in the planning stages.
Just clarify on that one for a second. So the idea of the terracing down the hill would be to capture water that is flowing down that hill. So it's to, to, to catch it before it gets to the additional businesses down the hill. So there's less water that they're dealing with down there. So no pumping uphill.
I see. Some more flow control then.
Yes.
Okay. Cool.
So I want to do a time check. We've got about eight minutes left in the meeting. Bruce, how do you think we're doing here? Do we need to think about extending the meeting at all? Or are we getting close to what you need tonight?
I think I got the big picture items I needed, honestly. Rachel, is there anything else that we identified that we, oh, block sizes?
Yeah, should we skip to that?
Yeah, let's do that. Yes.
Some background info. Yeah, next week, we're going to come back with more on urban design and regulations and design guidelines types things, I believe. So I think we can skip over the urban design stuff, but around slide 17 is a bigger question about through block connections. Yep, you had it right there. If you could go back two slides so that we've got a little background info on it. Yep, and one more too. So this slide here is open space work that we'll get to next week, next time. Next slide, please. So this is South Lake Union in Seattle. And we wanted to raise this because one of the big ideas in the subarea plan is to require through block connections with redevelopment. And generally, what we understand is that a better neighborhood is created when you can walk or bike or get through an area every 200 to 300 feet. So like downtown Portland, 200 foot block sizes. Downtown Seattle gets up closer between 300 and 400, as you see here. But one issue is that that can get pretty restrictive, especially if we're talking about businesses that have traditionally had really big floor plates. And even going into the future, or if you look out to the tech campuses in Redmond and Kirkland, you see a lot bigger buildings. So we're trying to balance a nice walkable neighborhood with what a business might need and making sure that this is still feasible and workable for businesses. So we bring up the South Lake Union example because some, a lot of this is newer development. As I mentioned, the Seattle block sizes, the long side of them is often 400 feet. So you can see that there. The shorter size here is 325 feet. I did want to show this example though, because this is a tech campus and it still is breaking up the building and giving those through block connections even there. So those are quite, you know, less than, less than 200 feet intervals there. And then next slide, just Canyon Park as an example. Next slide, please.
I think we lost our driver. Oh, there is.
So as you can see, some of these buildings are quite large as well. So that Levitan one, 430 feet between the streets on either side of it and the Lockheed Martin one, 365 feet. So we don't want to preclude these kinds of businesses in the future by requiring too stringent of through block connection intervals. So further west, where we're closer to transit, we're pretty solid that 200, 300 feet makes a difference.
Pause for just a moment. We are bumping up against our time. And I'd like to see if we can have a motion to maybe extend the meeting 15 minutes. We don't need to use it all if we can get through it. But just allow us to work through this question. So is there a motion to extend? I saw Commissioner Olson's hand first.
Thanks. I move to extend the meeting by 15 minutes.
Okay, do we have a second? Commissioner Fleet, seconds, all in favor of extending 15 minutes? Looks like we got everyone. So, okay, thank you. We will extend the meeting until 9:15 if necessary. So Rachel, please do continue.
Sure. So with those examples, you can see that for the greater walkability, it makes, it might make sense closer to I-405, the Green Line, to do smaller block sizes. But farther east, as we get into the more traditional business center, we may want to consider being more flexible on that. So we are interested in your thoughts on just weighing that walkability aspect and building type for the range of businesses we may see here in the future.
So commissioners. We have changing view here. Questions or comments to that issue? Commissioner Alter.
Rachel, could you bring that slide back?
I think Mike might be running the show.
Okay. I guess I specifically want to, to look at the South Lake Union example again. So what I noticed is that as you're talking about this through, like the name of the site is the through block connection. And, and so are you proposing that perhaps we could keep and/or extend these longer blocks? If we encourage developers to create these kind of mid, mid-block courtyards that you could kind of cut through? And how, how do you do that in terms of, in terms of like, is there then like a code that is, they're told that they need to be able to provide these through block connections and have these walkable spaces between buildings?
Yeah, sorry, I should back up and give that background, right? So the development regulations, the current draft of them is talking about when an area redevelops, you must allow for through block connections every 200 to 300 feet or so. And yes, it would come with development. If your parcel's smaller than that, you just have to, you know, talk about where it would be. If it's a large parcel or conglomeration of parcels, also identify those paths through. So the locations are not set. There is some guidance. Those dotted lines are kind of a suggested conceptual way that they could work out in a logical manner. But there would be flexibility for developers and designers to figure out the best path through, through their site.
And to clarify, those through block connections would not need to be roads which accommodate vehicles. It could be paths?
They would at least need to accommodate emergency and delivery vehicles, but maybe not every one of them. And some of that is still getting worked out in the regulatory work.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is Mike. I was going to suggest that if you get a chance, you might go to downtown Bellevue. Because they have a lot of mid-block and through block connections because their blocks are 600 feet long. They, they're what they call super blocks. And as a result, they have required development in certain areas in the downtown to provide those through block connections. Most of theirs are pedestrian only. Because they have, the, the street network is such that they're able to maneuver around that. And they have different ways of achieving that depending on the topography and the building design. So there's some flexibility in there. But it is part of the code. It's part of the regulations and the design standards for the downtown. And it's, and it's been fairly successful.
Commissioner Olson.
I actually work in Bellevue, not these days, but typically. And it's, the through block connections are kind of delightful when you're walking around on your lunch and whatever. So I would definitely be in support of something similar in this subarea. I do think some of them rely on steps and don't have ramps. So I would want to make sure that we make them accessible. We can do better than Bellevue. But yeah, that's, I just wanted to say that. So I was glad you brought that up because I was thinking, oh, yeah, just like.
Okay. Other commissioners? Seeing anyone raising a card? Hey Bruce, anything else you would like from us?
The only thing I want to tell you is we do have some flexibility, is my understanding correct, on the through block connections? Is that kind of a, yeah, go ahead and go forth and work. Uh-oh.
We're on a timer here and the light kicks off every once in a while.
You're subtle in the dark.
Yes. I think it'll come back in a second and blind you momentarily.
I can, I can join you. Sorry.
I, I may not be moving enough to wave my arms more or something, but.
If you're jumping, just.
Okay, where were we?
Just to reiterate Bruce's question, it's, is there, is there support for flexibility in the intervals between through block connections?
I see a lot of nodding heads. Does that work for you?
That, that, not, not even heads as long as they're not going to sleep. Yes.
They come back up. They go down but come up.
That's good. That's good. I think the last thing I'd like to cover in the last 10 minutes or so was just our next steps. I'm wondering if I can get to that slide, our last slide.
While I'm scrolling through here, I just want to make, make a note that I'm not doing this because I'm a control freak, though I am. It's because we thought this probably works best.
And honestly.
Yeah, the remote meetings are still a learning process, I think.
Yes.
Okay, so next steps, Bruce.
So, uh, next week, we actually had scheduled it as a public hearing. So we're still going to do a bit of a public hearing, but it's also going to be a lot of a study session. And kind of along the lines of some of the items that Rachel has identified, you're going to see a little bit more meat, if you would, within the design guidelines and the regulations, as well as a little bit of more information on the planned action ordinance. And some of the things you've asked for tonight, we're going to try and get that to you. I don't know if we'll get it to you tomorrow because we only have one day until Friday and we're all off on Friday. The other thing is that we're going to have a pretty good sized public hearing on the 7/15. That'll be the first really big public hearing the planning commission has where we get a lot of input from folks. We're also working on a public engagement virtual mechanism. Now, we're not exactly sure when that's going to happen, if it's going to be more toward August or July, but we want to take some information and basically provide it to the committee as we go through our process. Finally, we do believe that it makes a lot of sense for the commission to continue the, the July 15th hearing to August 5th. Again, apologies, but we think that it makes a lot of sense to give people two opportunities to provide input to you. Then hopefully, we have enough information for the commission to make a recommendation. And the next step would be to take it to the council for their public hearings and adoption of a planned action ordinance, which is the big ticket item here. So there's a lot of things that are going to happen in the next few weeks. And I just want to identify that you will be very busy here.
So let's all check our calendars and make sure that the extent we are able to, we will be there. And certainly we need to quorum those meetings. Okay. Anything else on this study session then?
Unless there's anything, and again, I always want to offer that if somebody has some specific questions or something like that, they can certainly give me a call. I'm here for eight more days.
But who's counting?
Me.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Steve and Rachel, thank you for your presentations.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close the study session with that. Is there any old business for us to discuss? Being no old business, any reports from staff? Excuse me. Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Commissioner Kieran. I do apologize for interrupting. I'm not sure if my card is seen. At the last meeting, there were some questions about public outreach and there were some answers in the new packet that we received. And I really want to express my appreciation for both having a timeline in a public meetings and also showing the number of people included. Bruce and Michael, those were very helpful. I am going to continue to ask for disaggregated data from communities of color and cultural anchors to the extent that it's available. And if it's not available, maybe we could acknowledge that and see that as part of the planning process. So I don't know if next week's session would be the time when that would be discussed. I just want to make sure that it is still a topic that will be there going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for raising that. Did I see anyone else? Sometimes it's hard to look between all of the squares here. All right, seeing no other old business, any reports from staff this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one brief item. The, as you noted at the beginning of the meeting, the governor's extension of the OPMA exemption expires at midnight tonight unless it's extended again. We haven't heard yet if that will happen. We are assuming at this point it will not. So we may have a little bit different type of meeting next week, but we'll still be doing every, most, everybody else will be virtual. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. It shouldn't affect how the commission's working, but just want to make you aware of that. We may have some in-person testimony next week. And then I just would add, Commissioner Piestrip notified me just earlier this evening. He will not be here next week. Thank you for that notification. It's a good reminder to all the commissioners, if there is a meeting coming up, you know you won't be able to make. If you could let myself and the chair know about that ahead of time, just to make sure we don't run into any forum issues. And I think we did ask you early on about the August 5th date, and I believe everybody said they could make that. So if that has changed, or if you think that might be a problem, please let me know as soon as possible. So with that, thank you very much. Really appreciate all of the discussion and the, and the guidance tonight is very helpful.
Thank you. I, I think in, in these times, perhaps we're a little less likely to lose members to travel. But it is helpful to staff if you can look out as far as your calendar allows you. Know you're not going to be at any meeting at any point in the future. It, it will help staff planning the calendar. So just kind of keep that in mind as you make your other plans. So reports from members. Members have anything they'd like to bring to the group at this time? Looking through all the squares, seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? I saw Commissioner Olson first.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Who, who is that second?
Commissioner Piestrip.
Oh, Commissioner Piestrip, seconds. Okay. All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
All right, the planning commission is adjourned at 9:09 for the hawk on the wall there. Thank you all for your attendance and forbearance through our technology. Good night, all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.